I'll call to order the meeting of Shawnee City Commissioners, June 18th, 2012. Call roll please.
Stevens.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Herrod.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Collier.
Here.
Winteringer.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight will be given by Reverend Ray Belfort, the recently ordained pastor for First Christian Church, followed by the flag salute. All who wish to, please rise.
Let us pray. God, we come to you this evening to ask your blessings upon this meeting and to give you our thanks. We pray that you will continue to bless us with the freedoms that we have that allow us to assemble like this to make decisions for our community. We pray, God, that you will keep personal agendas out of the business tonight, but let us listen to each other, to hear what each says, because that shows respect. And with respect, we can form true community here. We are thankful for all the leadership that we have. We are thankful for this community. We are thankful for those who protect our safety, our peace and fireman, and all of those who are part of this great city. We ask your blessings now, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, consider approval of agenda. Motion to approve by Commissioner Herrod.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sims. Call roll please.
Herrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, consider approval of consent agenda. We need some discussion on a couple of them, just for clarification. On, do you want to pull 2A?
Please.
Okay, we'll pull item 2A. Also, there was a correction on the minutes. It's just a typo correction where it said that Billy was absent, but he was here.
I know, she was on her own.
That's right, but not fill in the blank under Board Four.
It's corrected now.
Yes, it's corrected to sign if we approve them. Okay. Anything else? One correction on B and then to pull A.
So we're needing a second.
I made it.
Who made the motion? Okay.
Second.
All right, a motion by Commissioner Herrod with a second by Commissioner Sims. Call roll please.
Herrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, item 2A.
We discovered an error in the agenda. Item 2A refers you to item 15 on this agenda, which shows five bid openings. There should be six. The properly, the notice bidders was proper to open tonight, the advertising was proper to open tonight. The choices are to open and take no action, which is what you do anyway. The only action you take being to refer it to staff, or you would have to not open, send it back, re-advertise and do it over. This is not a material flaw. You're not taking action, so it's not a violation of the open meeting law. So even though you can go ahead and approve 2A as it is, we will actually be opening six. Staff will open six in the room as they always do. When we get to 15, you'll get the report on all six. A through E, you want to make a motion to refer to staff, and F is just going to float out there in the ether, but it will come back in two weeks like everything else. It's that way we're covered with all our little technical problems.
Okay, so should we have a motion to accept 2A and acknowledge that we'll be opening six bids? We will read the sixth one.
Yes.
For the record, but would take no action. That would be your recommendation?
Yes.
For 2A? Okay. Everybody got that?
Still may.
Okay.
If, fellas can get it all down.
She's got it.
I got it.
All right, a motion by Commissioner Herrod and a second by Commissioner Winteringer. Got that?
Got it.
Okay, call roll please.
Herrod.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number three, citizens' participation. Okay. Item number four, city manager's presentation of employee of the month for June to Jennifer Dawson, Emergency Management.
Most of us probably know Jennifer. She's been around now for how many years?
Thirteen.
Thirteen years. Jennifer's been with the city since 1998. Since then, she's worked in the Emergency Management Department. She's seen the city through disasters and worked long hours to assist the citizens of Shawnee in their time of need. Jennifer enjoys many civic activities, including occupational exposure program, push partner for public health agencies. You're going to have to explain both of those, including the Employee Insurance Community, Health and Wellness Committee, Safe Communities Committee, and others. She's also been an active participant and a longtime treasurer for the LEPC, which is also known as the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Outside of work, Jennifer enjoys scrapbooking, reading, and spending time with her children. Join me in thanking her for her hard work as a city employee. Congratulations.
That's the city's employee bloodborne exposure program for any exposures that people have to bloodborne pathogens. We have several employees in that. The Push Partner Program is for the employees and their families. If we had a, if we needed to get medication to them in a crisis situation, we would be able to do that here at the city, and then our employees could take their medication back to their families. So.
Wow.
So yeah, it was, we did an exercise last year or the year before with that. So it's a fairly new program.
Aren't you also the one that publishes the health tips of the week?
Jill actually does that.
Okay.
But yeah, on the Health and Wellness Committee, we try to do that. So we're doing a nutrition, we're in week five of that. So we'll be doing a walking program. A lot of activities and things that the kids, the kids and families and all the employees can put straight in. So, a lot of good stuff.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five, public hearing and consider an ordinance to rezon property located at 2015 North Harrison from CP Land Shopping to C3 Automotive Commercial and Recreation. Case number P09-12, applicant Joe Covey. And I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this? Want to?
I'm representing the act.
Okay, okay. Is there anything that you need to tell us?
Unless you have a question.
All right, anyone wish to speak? Okay, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Is for rezoning, is that what it is?
Right, right. Okay, now a motion by Commissioner Herrod to approve the rezoning.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Sims. Any comments? Do you want to read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance concerning zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma to wit attractive land being a part of Lot 9, Lot 14, North Bridge Edition, Fifth Section, the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the rezoning plan to address more particularly described as follows. Beginning at a point on the east line of said Lot 9, a distance of 175.11 feet, south zero degrees, 25 minutes, 25 seconds west of the northeast corner of Lot 9, to south zero degrees, 25 minutes, 25 seconds west, a distance of 442.62 feet to the southeast corner of said Lot 9, to north 89 degrees, 53 minutes, 33 seconds west along the south line of said Lot 9, a distance of 449.29 feet, to north zero degrees, 6 minutes, 27 seconds east, a distance of 179.97 feet, to north 89 degrees, 53 minutes, 33 seconds west, a distance of 189 feet, to north 1 degree, 8 minutes, 2 seconds east along the west line of said Lot 9, a distance of 257.45 feet, to south 88 degrees, 51 minutes, 58 seconds east, a distance of 152 feet, to north 1 degree, 8 minutes, 2 seconds east in parallel to the west line of said Lot 9, a distance of 6.91 feet, to north 89 degrees, 58 minutes, 59 seconds east in parallel to the north line of said Lot 9, a distance of 484.04 feet to the point beginning, rezoning said property from CP Land Shopping Center to C3 Automotive Commercial and Recreation, amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Okay.
Justin will they still have to come back with a plat and so forth for, for all the planning information and so forth?
Yes, sir, that's correct. They will have to. Should they divide the property, this simply rezones a larger property and allows them to divide it in the future if they choose. There are no immediate development plans at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Call roll please.
Herrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number six, consider approval of the Shawnee Mission Plaza Section 8 Final Plat located at the southeast corner of North Kickapoo and Plaza Drive, case number S08-12, applicant Burger Engineering LLC deferred from the May 2nd meeting. And I believe we received an amended agenda with the plat in it.
It's also at your seats, too.
Oh, there's also a hard copy up here. All right. Any questions of staff or any motion?
Well, there's conditions on that. Yeah, move to approve with the four conditions.
Motion from Commissioner Sims to approve with the four conditions.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Collier. Any other considerations? Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Not here.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Herrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number seven, consider approval of the Shawnee Bible Church Edition Preliminary and Final Plats located in the 1700 block of East 45th Street, case number S09-12 and S10-12, applicant Landys Engineering. All right, seemed like this had conditions, too.
Justin, was it some problems or questions? Was this the first time it came up?
Commissioner Herrod, the questions that came up, I think what you're speaking to is the rezon application that was heard in January of this year. And at that time, you might remember the applicant wanted to, requested a more intense commercial zoning of C3, and the planning commission recommended C2, and the city commission conferred that recommendation. And so the property is zoned C2, which does allow for a church. And the property, the applicant for the rezon is affiliated with this church. And so the rezoning incorporated about 10 acres, and then this is a separate, this is 3.07 acres of that 10 acres, which has now been deeded to the church for construction. And so the request this evening is for platting of just those three, just a little over three acres. And future development on the rest of the site, which is, which fronts a future Bryan Street extension there, would occur at a future date.
And also, this plat allows for the widening of 45th, doesn't it?
It does, yes ma'am. We do have additional right-of-way dedication.
Okay.
And there will also be a sidewalk constructed as well.
Yeah, okay.
I'd move to approve that, upon the final plat.
Okay.
With recommendations.
With the four recommendations.
Second.
All right, a motion to approve the preliminary and final plat by Commissioner Herrod, seconded by Commissioner Sims, conditional on the four recommendations. Make sense? Okay. Anything else on this? Call roll please.
Herrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number eight, consider approval of an ordinance for a drought management plan. We have it as presented? Yep, it's okay. We read it.
This is just, this is included in the yield study, and it is section nine of the yield study. And it's just a drought management plan that the CDM and staff came up with, and we're going to turn it into an ordinance so we can implement it if we need to.
I emailed Jim this morning about lowering that condition, or, you know, what is it? The three last conditions, the four ice conditions, one starts at 1057, and I was concerned about it being below 1060.
Well, hopefully, if we ever get, hopefully, we'll never have to get to the first two. If we get to that last one, we're going to be.
In trouble.
We're going to be in trouble anyway, and we're going to be, we're not going to be really worried about what this is. We're going to be, we're going to be dealing with a real problem. I mean, it's here to use, and we've got to have some kind of limit for it and stuff. But if you'll notice on the last condition, I think it's 3 million gallons a day, 3 and 1/2 billion gallons a day at that level. So when you get.
It's pretty low.
Yeah, when you get that, we're going to be in extreme measures. We're going to be shutting down all kinds of water usage. I mean, that's the extreme, extreme end.
Another concern I have about total studies, you know, how they figured to increase on usage for businesses and so forth, and I don't think I got that answered. But, and yeah, we'll just have to wait and see. Asked that question at the hearing that night, but I wasn't satisfied with the answers, so.
And we can.
Adjust it.
If we need to. I mean, nothing's.
Well, the reason I express that concern is if, you know, we're talking about 20 years here, and if we, we add on, you know, the plans to connect the total water line, maybe to the plan of the 30-inch line, and if we don't do that, then if we run in trouble, then we're going to be back to the square one. So that's why I was concerned, concerned about the.
And really, what the study showed, in my opinion, too, is we're going to be more restricted by the capacity of the plant than we are for the lake.
With flow, then with the flow from either lake.
Mm-hmm. We only have a certain.
Because you're not going to be able to receive very much water at the lower levels.
I'd move to adopt the drought management plan.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Herrod to accept the drought management plan.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Any other questions or concerns? Read the ordinance, please.
An ordinance relating to a drought management plan for the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, repealing and amending sections 2667 and 2667.1 of the Shawnee Municipal Code, setting forth voluntary and mandatory restrictions for water use in case of water shortages, providing for penalties, providing for repeal, or providing for complications, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency. The emergency will require a separate motion and vote.
Okay.
Is it actually an emergency? Do we need that clause?
We're not in an emergency right now, so we could have the 30 days, probably.
Commissioner, we're not in an emergency situation with our water level situation at the lake. So if it's not the desire of the commission to approve that portion, we can, we can wait.
So wait, how long does it take before it goes into action?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
How long?
Thirty days. Thirty days. I have to wait around thirty days.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other questions? Call roll please.
Herrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Any motion for the emergency clause? Okay. No motion. So item number nine, consider agreement between the city of Shawnee and Oklahoma Environmental, Inc., for doing mitigation and cleanup work for the Oklahoma Corporation Commission on Independence Street just west of Center Street.
Did I read those calendar right? We're not going to start on until August or something like that?
Looks like it didn't finish until August 24th, something like. And I asked Brian if he had contacted the schools to see what their plans were for that time.
Madam Mayor, we had not contacted the schools as of probably 10 o'clock this morning. I asked the city engineer to please make that telephone call and see what their response would be.
Okay. And to Commissioner Herrod's question, when is this supposed to start? Should this be approved tonight? Do you have that in front of you?
Excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt. The, oh yes, the representatives are here. They can speak to the actual agreement. But construction starts July 15th and will end August 24th. The school starts August 8th, but there's no way to do it. It's the same D-2 plan that we had sent Dr. Jesse Field before. He tried to call, I went to the school. He emailed in the same plan that was previously onboard. He was onboard with it previously, just didn't like it to be during the school year. Well, now the school year is kind of over, so. And we got the stipulations in there for the $1,000 a day liquidated damages. So if they pass August 24th, that will go into effect, all the contractor's bonds and everything, or to the city of Shawnee, performance bond, maintenance bond, whatnot, then, don't know if they have a contractor onboard yet, but they're here to speak to that.
This is just the agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
So are we all lined up, ready to start? Are they all lined up, ready to start? They have a contractor and all that kind of business.
We had an engineered map of the excavation area produced, gave it to the city of Shawnee to, for their approval, had some modifications. So it's back with our engineer. We anticipate getting it this Friday. We will get Mr. Crowekey's approval, which at that time, then we will let it for bids. And so would anticipate maybe a, probably a 14-day bid letting period. And then we'll know more when our contractor replies. We've been told by our engineer to anticipate six to eight weeks. We'll see what the excavator says.
Excuse me, can you tell us what your name is?
Sorry, Deanna Atkinson.
Thank you very much. It's okay, for the record.
Any other questions?
Any questions while she's up here? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, what's your pleasure?
I tell you, from seeing all those cars lined up on both the center down there when they're picking up kids after school is a nightmare, and I sure hate to see school starting, people delivering off kids, because it's really going to create a problem. John, I looked at the map, yeah.
Just another point, though, this will coincide also with a project we're opening bids for, the rehab concrete stretch project. The majority of it's going to be in front of Sequoia School, so if we do it at the same time, it will.
Thanks, John.
Wow, okay.
I'd move to approve, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'd move to approve.
Okay, motion to approve the agreement by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Smith.
Madam Mayor, just a point, you know, for those who aren't sitting at their desks looking at a map, it will be an inconvenience on Independent Street there, but Center Street will be open east and, or north and south. So for the commuting public, when those kids go back to school this fall, that will be open.
Yep. Thank you for the clarification. All right, anything else? Call roll please, Phyllis.
Sims.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Herrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 10, consider a resolution of support for economic development and affordable housing for the absentee Shawnee Housing Authority. This is for the development on Bryan and Main.
Move to approve.
All right, a motion to approve the resolution by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Stevens. Read the resolution, please.
This is a resolution of support for economic development and affordable housing for the benefit of the citizens of Shawnee, Oklahoma, in support of tax credit award for the construction of affordable housing development in the city of Shawnee.
Okay, call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Herrod.
No.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 11, consider a resolution adopting the budget for the city of Shawnee and related authorities for the period of July 1st, 2012, through June 30th, 2013, finding all things requisite and necessary have been done in preparation and presentation of budget.
Madam Mayor, just a clarification. You have before you the budget document, the cover letter that I put on the summary budget that was in your packets. We found some errors in it after publishing on Friday, so this is a much better literary document. We'd be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
All right, let me open this thing up.
Don't I comment that, Mike, about the budget is, and the city manager's portion of the budget, there's a decent of about $120,000, and he and I have visited, and we've agreed that to set that aside until January the 1st, or there's a possibility of having four new commissioners and so forth. So I'm not in agreement that we can, that those new positions are absolutely necessary. So I'd ask him to take another look at it and come back to the new commission and the commission in January to set that aside and not to make any action on those two personnel until January of 2013. So we, he and I have made that agreement. Based on that agreement, and also, I emailed Brian and James this morning about the maintenance building and headquarters out at the lake, and my understanding, Jim, that's in SMA budget to complete that building this fiscal year. And also, I do again, I want to say that I appreciate the staff, all the notes that I sent in a couple of weeks ago, them making the clarifications and getting back to me on those items. I do appreciate that. And I'd move, based on those conditions, that we do adopt the budget for 2012, 13.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Herrod to adopt the budget for 2012, 2013. I have a second, more for discussion.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Collier.
Madam Mayor, if I may clarify.
Go ahead.
There were, there were four main reasons why. I want to explain what the thought process was behind having the positions in the city manager's budget. The positions are basically, there was $100,000 that was put in there, 20% of which would have been used for promotions to allow for department heads potentially to have some growth in their positions. And then the other $80,000 would have been used to backhaul or backfill the positions in their departments, whomever was selected for those positions, to pick up the slack where the work was left off in terms of picking up additional city manager responsibilities. And then the other eighty thousand dollars would have been used to backhaul or backfill the positions in their departments, whomever was selected for those positions, to pick up the slack where the work was left off in terms of picking up additional city manager responsibilities. Couple of other things, when I was hired in two thousand and nine, there were several things that the city commission felt as though I needed to do. One of which was, you probably need to start looking and selecting an assistant city manager. This is gonna be a, this is gonna be a tough job for you, and there's a lot involved in it. I wholeheartedly agree, I just haven't had the dollars to do it with, with the economic recession that we faced. We trimmed budgets and there just wasn't the dollars to do it. In fact, we furloughed employees, we took pay away from employees, and we had many, many positions that were open during that time. Second, department heads requested it. They're having trouble getting to me in terms of answers that they need to day-to-day operations, so wanted to be respectful of that. And finally, in my review, there was some, some discussion in commissioners about time management and things of that nature. Having said all those things and clarified that for the commissioners, Madam Mayor, I, I agree with Commissioner Harrod and Commissioner Collier, and we will relook at that at another time.
Okay. Because this motion approves the city, the general fund budget, the SMA and SAA, I have a question on the SMA before we proceed. This budget assumes a rate increase on water that starts July first. And I believe I sent a request to see, is it possible, should we decide to postpone that increase? Does that have any effect on our, on our bond agreements and our obligations, like to OWRB? Anything like that?
We've made our bond payments recently, so, no, not this time.
Okay, so there's not, there wouldn't be a legal problem with that? Okay. I would request that we, that we move the rate increases to possibly November, which I believe may have been our intent initially, but when the ordinance was written, it was put in place for the beginning of a fiscal year. And then maybe make that, possibly bring an ord, bring the ordinance or, or an amended ordinance to us at the next commission meeting where we could approve that date. As long as, as long as we're still solvent and it doesn't do anything with the money that we've borrowed against, because basically the rate increases are for debt service payment. That's what that's for. And if we think that three months, this, or four months maybe, is not gonna make that much of a difference, that we can go the four months without having that rate increase and still make our debt service payment. I would ask that that be included in the motion and that we clean up that paperwork at the next meeting.
Is that an ordinance, Mary Ann, or is that, was that rate increases, or do you know?
I'm sorry, I do not know.
That was, that was prior to our city attorney's time, but yes, sir, it was, it was an ordinance that was passed by the city commission, so it will need to be amended, in my opinion, sir.
What, so in the, between now and July, whatever, the first commission date, is that gonna?
It's, your first meeting is July the second. We can have an amendment with an emergency.
And because it's on the water that's used in July, that doesn't get billed until the end of July or August, those bills haven't gone out assuming this at all.
Correct. We won't, we won't actually be billing for any of the zones in the city until after the city commission's first meeting in July.
Okay.
So is that gonna affect the budget, the million dollars you have set up for water and sure and so forth?
No, sir, I mean, the, the increase that goes into, into effect this year is relatively small compared to past years. We estimate around thirty thousand dollars a month, which sounds like a lot of money, but when you're talking about a twelve million dollar budget, four months of thirty thousand dollars won't have any effect on it, sir.
Yeah, I know.
And for my clarification, you wanna amend the ordinance so that it's always November the first, if that will be any future renewal by?
Yeah, my recommendation is November. I don't know if it's easier than mathematicians for January or something, but just enough.
Okay.
Okay.
This is the last increase, is it?
I think there's one more.
There are two more. One would have been July first of two thousand and twelve, and the last would have been July first of two thousand and thirteen.
And both are relatively small.
Yeah.
It's all relative, that's true.
It's relative, yeah.
So would you consider amendment to your motion?
Be fine.
With that in place?
So all of the rate increases will be in November going forward after this?
Lower usage rates is what she's getting at, right? When you water your yards out, it won't cost you as much.
That's right. Postponing the, the damage for later.
We, we can't not have it. That's an obligation that we have in terms of our indebtedness, probably, so. That was fine. Okay. Any other questions on the budget, the detail?
Just on the discussion, on, I understand postponing the deputy city managers or like that, but I believe that we can call it out as a separate issue, that this body, I don't think we have to wait till January. We can start looking at it now, give more information and do it as a separate, anything wants, the majority up here vote on something. I think that there is need to be more discussion and let more information out there. But I'm not really in favor of just putting it off till January if there's a.
A need.
A need.
Yeah.
And we all, I know, the majority of us did sit down there and told you to get the help. And that was the thing, so that's something to discuss, we can have one of the future meetings.
So do you take applications for that job from each department head? Is that how you do that?
It would be, it would be an internal opening only, John, so.
So you move somebody up and they potentially, and then you interview them for the job and?
Right.
And then backfill.
Do you have anybody interested at this time?
No, sir. Just would need to apply for the position.
Of course, my opinion on it, I know I'm in the majority, I'm in the minority, but anyhow, for cities this size, I would like information from like OMLA and places like that. What there should be, you know, a dividing point of when you, the size of city and the size of employees and so forth, and I don't think we're there when, when we need an assistant or associate manager. And I, you know, it's tight as the budgets have been in the past, I think that that money can be, you know, better used for other things. I mean, you keep, we keep on, we're gonna be personnel heavy at the top, and I just don't agree to that. So I, I'm waiting, like the City of Midwest City has one deputy, or one associate city manager. I've asked for a copy of their flow chart, which I haven't received yet, but I'm, you know, we've made the agreement, we could take, I think the city manager and I can agree to take a look at it as we move along. But I don't think we need to be in any hurry about doing it, so we're operating, I think, fine right now.
Yeah, we also can't just stop business.
We're not stopping business. We'll have business every day as usual.
But also the agreement, there can be agreement between one commissioner and city manager that holds the rest of us at bay. It needs to be more of a group input before we go to that decision.
I'd like to say, when I see Brian going out of town, that there's a consistent person that is maybe, you know, knows what's going on more than just assigning somebody, he's in charge while he's gone. I think it'd be good to educate the person more and have more of a knowledgeable person or somebody in place when you do go out of town, wherever you're going or whatever you're doing. So I kinda like to see, you know, consistency in that area would be good for our city, I would think.
Well, my original statement was, there could be four new people. There's definitely gonna be one, but there could be four sitting at this desk. So I would, rather than immediately start pursuing additional help, I think it'd be better to, you know, wait till we.
Well, we're gonna know before January.
But.
Yeah.
Actually, any new people won't be seated till away in Mary, Mary.
September.
Mary in September. So that's still three months away.
And the budget can be amended by this body.
Right.
Whoever they may be.
Right. That's why that I feel like I'm trying to not make the city manager and the staff, that he's wanting to hire a campaign issue, and that's sure, I'm sure that's why he agreed to it. But anyhow, trying to remove that from being a campaign issue and move it back to, we know for sure that the new commissioners are seated. So that they have a chance to react and to observe and get that information.
But we also just can't stop business during the election cycle. I mean, if that's what we're gonna do, then let's just all go home and wait until after the election and they get seated, 'cause we're too afraid to make a decision.
I'm not afraid to make a decision.
Not either. And I'm not for him having somebody behind him, at least one person, because you know what? You need someone that's ready to step up to the plate when the time's called, and I think if we keep putting it off, we're just prolonging the inevitable, which is, we're not gonna have somebody ready. So.
Brian, what kind of training do you have for this person to put them, get them ready for this position?
Well, most of them as department heads, commissioners are, you know, pretty well versed in the day-to-day operations of the city, and, you know, depending on their particular departmental expertise, of course, they're much more. There are some OML opportunities, of course, OML meets once a year in either Tulsa or Oklahoma City. There are other opportunities for them to meet with City Managers Association of Oklahoma and be a part of the Assistant City Managers Program. So there's some opportunity, yes, sir.
So this is a hundred and forty thousand dollar cost out of a fifty-six million dollar budget?
It's a hundred thousand dollars, I must correct, commissioners. It was a hundred thousand dollars that was put in the city manager's budget out of, right now, around a fifty, fifty-six million dollar budget.
And we're approving the budget, I mean, the recommendation that is in there right now?
No, it's been ruled.
I think, I would suggest you take a stop here and let Phyllis re, read back what we think the motion is. We had a motion and then, and then the mayor offered an amendment that wasn't voted on as an amendment. I suspect if it's accepted by the mover and the seconder, but I think we probably need to square away what the motion is.
Right now, I have the motion to adopt the budget for two thousand and twelve, thirteen, including moving the water rate increases to November of two thousand and thirteen, or twenty, yeah, two thousand and thirteen. So.
Twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve, yeah. So do you wanna say?
Okay, read it back again.
Motion to adopt the budget for two thousand and twelve, thirteen, including moving, moving water rate increases to November, two thousand and twelve.
Is that your motion?
That's the motion right now.
We just, what I said was that the city manager and I have an agreement.
Not to take it out, but.
Not to take it out, but to wait until January. And if Commissioner, uh, Collier wants to pursue some information and gather data, that's fine with me. But this, and if you don't wanna act on that motion, then Collier can remove the second, and then somebody can make another motion, we go out, vote again.
But the motion is to approve the budget with the one change within the SMA. That is the only change. That's the only change. Which means it's still in his budget to go forward should he want to bring that to us, right? Right. Yep. I mean, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what. Mm-hmm. Okay.
If, if that's clarified, I wanna make sure commissioners understand, we'll need to bring the ordinance for the rate in, in increase back to commissioners at our next meeting to make the adjustment to, to that.
Also, any staff members, if we're gonna adopt the budget like that, then any new additional staff members should be approved by the commission too, not in name, but in position. Or a budget change or something. Cause my understanding was that they've been removed from the budget.
Yes, sir, I'm not so sure I follow you.
I said, my understanding was they're gonna be removed or set aside until January in the budget, not any action taken. On the personnel.
The budget is, is set with that in there. Your request is that the money isn't spent in the next two months.
That's right.
And that's your request, that action is taken. But that's not the motion. That's not the motion at this time. That's true. That's not what we're voting on. Okay.
So just for clarification, we're voting to approve the budget as presented with the changing the effective date of any water increase to November one, basically, of the calendar year as opposed to July. But everything else is the same? Okay.
And, and let me further clarify, I am fine with waiting until after the election so that we know which, which new commissioners or not there are.
But I don't know that.
I just, I don't wanna make any, that's, let's leave it at that.
Call roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye, and I'm sorry, we didn't read the resolution first.
Oh.
Can I read the resolution for the record, please, Mary Ann, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I scanned right past it, too.
I have it highlighted here.
I wanna back up, too, if you're ready.
Yeah, I know.
A resolution approving and adopting the budget for the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma for the period July one, two thousand and twelve, through June thirty, two thousand and thirteen, finding all things requisite and necessary have been done in preparation and presentation of said budget.
Okay, thank you. And if, and the motion passed?
Yes.
Okay. Item number twelve, acknowledged sales tax report received June, two thousand and twelve.
Well, sales tax was up last month, uh, this month, I should say, but it wasn't as good as it has been the last couple of months. It's only three hundred dollars from last year, but this past fiscal year, we budgeted two percent, we made that by two and a half percent overall for the year. So it's slowly coming back. I mean, this is our normal low months anyways, and it should hopefully pick up before school starts again, so. So, but we received this year one million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars.
For June.
For June.
Yep. Any questions? Thank you. Item number thirteen, consideration and possible action on collective bargaining agreement between local number three, IUPA, and City of Shawnee for July one, two thousand and twelve, through June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen.
Makes no difference. Let me start off and then I'll turn it over to Mary Ann if there's any questions. This year's negotiations have been, commissioners, the best that we have had in three years that I've been your manager. You have a report there in your agenda that has four items on it. For the IAFF, or excuse me, IUPA, drug and alcohol policy, the list of drugs being tested as far as expanded, and the contract now provides for an automatic second chance if an officer tests positive. We've also had that happen in the last couple of years. The policy, a positive test now will result in disciplinary action up to and including termination. It was, that is huge for your manager and your staff that has to manage that department. Letter B, the policy is considerably short and making reference to the standards by, set by statute, rather including all the detail. Letter C, results of the test can be introduced in administrative hearings so that if an employee is discharged for drug use, that information can be disclosed in a hearing on unemployment compensation. Sometimes we have employees that are dismissed for drug charges. In this case, we can actually use that information as part of their unemployment compensation challenge. But at E, at the request of the union, there's a provision for mandatory universal testing, meaning that during the year, all employees of the police department will be tested at least once. This was volunteered by the IUPA this year. They want to see their members tested every year. I can't stress enough how huge this is for us as managers of that department, because, particularly because those, those union members actually end up enforcing those drug and alcohol laws that we have. Light duty. Light duty policy is being implemented, giving employees the opportunity to do work. Somebody's injured on the job, right now, we don't have a light, light duty policy for the IUPA, for the police officers. With this agreement and this contract, we do have that. With this agreement and this contract, we do have that now. Probation or period for evaluation has been extended. It's kinda been something that the chiefs wanted to do for a while. Sometimes the, the new officers aren't necessarily doing as good a job as they'd like for them to, so the present policy is that the probation lasts one year from day to hire. Because of scheduling for CLEAT, we've had officers who complete the year virtually simultaneously with completing the FDO. So we don't even know how they're actually performing on their own, so extending it was, was a big part of what the chief of police wanted to do. With that, commissioners, number four, a wage increase of four percent is recommended by the management.
Okay.
That, the only thing I'd add, I think the, what's in common of the three, the three things, and really, that's not all. In addition, the E-Board has met with Chief France, and they've, they've made modifications on a lot of policies, including, you know, tattoos and various things. Any, everything they've done, including these three things, has been an expression of their desire to be a professional department. To look professional, to be professional, to be able to count on one another's being professional, and for safety. And they have, they're working with the chief on such things as the sick leave policy in order to kinda help folks who tend to need to burn a day every time they earn a day to, to get over that. So, it, and, and I, and again, it went very, very smoothly. I mean, we have two contracts, we had two contracts before the fifteenth of June. I don't know when we've been able to do that, and I'm, I really appreciate the work they put in.
Yep.
I would move to approve.
Second.
All right, a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement by Commissioner Sims, seconded by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 14, consideration and possible action on collective bargaining agreement and memorandum of understanding between Local Number Two Zero Six, IAFF, and the City of Shawnee for July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013.
Madam Mayor, items one and two are very similar to the IUPA negotiations this year, both in terms of the drug testing and the workers' compensation policy for light duty. I just got to stress, this is huge for us as management in terms of both making those employees productive when they're down on the job because they've hurt themselves, or the fact that we can test for, for illicit drug use or prescription drug use or things of that nature. Further, one of the things that the IAFF asked for was employees who are attending training off-duty for which they receive compensatory time, receive time for travel as well. You know, the majority of their training is to Stillwater or something along those lines, which is less than seventy miles from Shawnee. But if they're traveling to Dallas or Houston or something like that, like when we were doing the Swift Water Rescue training and things like that, several firefighters were training, driving to, to Dallas and, and were not getting any compensatory time or anything for that. So we set the limit at seventy-five miles each way. The parties have also agreed to a goal of at least one firefighter be on duty at all times assist the public with the insulation inspection and child safety restraints. We have a few firefighters who are already trained to do that. For, for everyone's benefit, this is actually four days' worth of training in order to become certified to put a child restraint seat in your vehicle. Sounds, sounds crazy, but, and then, let's, how many different vehicles and how many different varieties of seats and all those kinds of things that you put in the vehicles. This has long been something that the fire chief and myself have wanted to work on with the firefighters. The only thing is, I'd love to incentivize it, but I want our citizens to be able to have a baby at the hospital and be able to go there on the weekends and figure out how to get that thing installed into their automobile. So, wanna try and come up with an agreement where we come up with an amount of participation by the firefighters that we can guarantee that they do that, as well as do some events with Success by Six and some of the other nonprofit organizations in our community that could, could make sure that our, our community and public and their children are safe in their cars. So, having said that, we'll be working on that MOU throughout the year and also management recommends a wage increase of four percent for the IAFF also. I certainly would defer to the city attorney for any further comments.
Well, on the, on the drug and alcohol policy, you know, our, the city's drug and alcohol policies were not consistent at all. For example, the firefighters were not subject to random drug testing. Only safety-sensitive physician in the city not subject to random drug testing. And they readily agreed to that. Again, professionalism, efficiency. We, they're cordial, mostly, we just kinda worked on language. I mean, you know, they had some things that they asked for that they know that we're not gonna be able to do, and we had some things we kinda threw in that they weren't gonna be able to do. So we just kinda moved on from there and focused on the things that we could do. And it, it went, went very well also with them, and I, I appreciate. I mean, it eventually did that pretty much. Chip and, and Tammy and I sitting around in my office kinda writing things down and working them out. It was, it was just, it was a pleasant experience.
Well, historically, it's not been a pleasant experience, and I'm really proud of you, Mary Ann and Brian, for accomplishing this and, and both departments actually for getting there. I'd move we approve the IAFF contract as well.
And the memorandum of understanding?
Yes, MOU.
A motion by Commissioner Sims to approve the collective bargaining agreement and MOU for the IAFF, seconded by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I don't know when we've had a contract before the fiscal year. I think, I mean, just to reiterate what Mary Ann and what Frank said, this is very good. Thank you very much, both sides of the negotiating table, yeah. Okay, item number 15, consider bids, and we will start with A Shawnee Library Re-Roof.
All right, I do wanna kinda explain this, this bid to you a little bit. This is just not a roof on the library. It's extra insulation on that with some hardboard, a sixty mil single ply. There's also some replacement of the skylights on the roof, a safety rail around the roof hatch, which it doesn't have right now, and a ladder to get out the roof hatch, which doesn't have one other than a, a step ladder getting up there, so. That's all included in this re-roof bid. We did have a pre-bid meeting last Tuesday. We had ten contractors show up, and as you see, we had four bidders. Starting with Arrow Roofing, they have on days to complete the roof eighteen days with a base bid of one thirty-eight, two hundred, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. And an alternate bid, on this alternate bid, it raises our hail warranty from one inch to two inches, a felt-back roofing. And they had no bid.
Say that again, I'm sorry, say that, what, what the alternate is?
The alternate bid is for a felt-back sixty mil roofing that raises our hail warranty from one inch to two inch hail. Crawford Roofing, thirty-five days to complete, base bid, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and twenty, with no alternate bid. Mid-America Roofing, with twenty days to complete, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three on the base bid, with the alternative bid, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one thirty-five.
Total.
Total. And the fourth bid is Universal Roofing, thirty days completion on the job, base bid, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and ten. The, the complete bid for the alternate, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred. And with this project, we have budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand, so we come, come in well under that.
Is this a built-up roof, James?
No, it's not a built-up roof. It's a fully adhered sixty mil. Staff, I'd like to defer this to the next commission meeting to give us time to look over the bids to, to look at what they bid using on this and to make sure all their paperwork's aligned.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Sims, seconded by Commissioner Winteringer to defer award to the next meeting. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen B, Bryan and Independence Streets Signalization Project Contract Number COS-PWA-11-08.
Okay, item fifteen B is a bid opening for Signalization Project of Bryan and Independence. We had three bids received. First bid opened was from Traffic and Lighting Systems LLC out of Oklahoma City. Their bid was a hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty cents. Next bid opened was from Midstate Traffic Control, Inc., out of Oklahoma City. Their bid was two hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. And the third bid opened was from Shell Construction Company out of Oklahoma City. Their bid was two hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty cents. And we'd ask that this item be deferred until the next commission meeting allows us to tabulate the bids and come back with a recommendation.
So moved.
All right. A motion to defer to the next meeting by Commissioner Winteringer, seconded by Commissioner Stevens.
What was your estimate on that?
We have budgeted three hundred, I think, three hundred and fifty thousand. That's much lower than what we thought it was gonna be. This also includes some widening on Independence on the east side.
Call roll, please.
I'm sorry, this, motion by.
Motion by Winteringer and seconded by Stevens, I thought I said that, I'm sorry.
You did, I was.
You're listening.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Fifteen C, Cool Bird Lane Hazard Mitigation Project Contract Number COS-PW-11-09.
We had three bids received on this project. First bid opened was from CP Integrated Services out of Oklahoma City. Their bid was fifty-four thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and thirty cents. Second bid opened was from Nash Construction Company of Oklahoma City. Their bid was fifty-six thousand, five hundred and five dollars. And the last bid opened was from Rudy Construction Company out of Oklahoma City. Their bid is fifty-seven thousand, fifteen dollars. And we'd ask that this item be deferred until the next meeting to allow us to tabulate the bids and come back with a recommendation.
So moved.
All right, a motion to defer to the next meeting by Commissioner Winteringer, seconded by Commissioner Herod.
What was your estimate, John?
We had seventy-five thousand budgeted for this project.
Call roll, please.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Fifteen D, fiscal year eleven, twelve Rehab Asphalt Streets Project Contract Number COS-PW-11-10.
We've received four bids for this maintenance-type project. It's, first bid was from, not in any order, Nash Construction Company out of Oklahoma City. Their bid was five hundred eighty-nine thousand, ninety dollars. Second bid opened was from Hall Roads Paving, Inc., out of Oklahoma City. Their bid was six hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ten cents. Rudy Construction was the third bid out of Oklahoma City. Their bid was seven hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred, nine hundred dollars and fifty cents. And the last bid opened was from TJ Campbell Construction out of Oklahoma City. Their bid was eight hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty cents. And again, we would ask that this item be deferred until the next meeting to allow us to tabulate the bids and come back with a recommendation and make sure we got the money for this one.
So moved.
All right, a motion by Commissioner Herod and seconded by Commissioner Winteringer to defer to the next meeting for award.
Are these primarily quantities?
Do what?
Are these quantities? Bad question, what was your?
Yeah, these are, well, this project is bid after there's a bunch of different quantities, tons of asphalt, square yards of fabric, milli, but it's a, it's a maintenance overlay project.
What's your, what was your?
We had six hundred and fifty thousand, I'll take somewhere budgeted for it on this. We'll have to get with Cindy to make sure.
Okay.
Make sure you did, okay. Call roll, please.
I know we have the money there, it's in.
Herod.
Leftover from some accounts.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Whatever you give Cindy.
Who, does that mean?
That's you.
Yes, yes.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Yes.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Fifteen E, fiscal year eleven, twelve Rehab Concrete Streets Project Contract Number COS-PW-11-11.
We had six bidders on this project. First bid opened was from CP Integrated Services in the amount of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and fourteen cents. Next bid opened was from ATEC Paving out of Edmond, Oklahoma. Their bid was four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. Another bid, Nash Construction Company of Oklahoma City, their bid was four hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and five dollars. Next bid was from Hall Roads Paving, Inc., out of Oklahoma City. Their bid was three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. Next bid was from Rudy Construction Company out of Oklahoma City. Their bid was three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. And the last bid opened was from Continental Construction Corporation out of Edmond for five hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety cents. We'd ask that this item be deferred to the next meeting to allow us to come back with a recommendation.
All right, a motion by Commissioner Herod, seconded by Commissioner Winteringer to defer this to the next meeting for award. Do you have a question, Frank?
Yeah, what was your?
Ours is actually, we budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand for this.
Okay.
Confident we got some money left over, some projects from the Beard Street.
Okay, call roll, please.
Herod.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and the additional number fifteen item on the Al James Building?
That's correct. Madam Mayor, commissioners, this particular bid item was for the demolition of two-seventy North Beard, more commonly known as the Al James Building. We received five bids. First one was from Midwest Wrecking from Edmond, Oklahoma, at eighty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Number two, A-One Dozer Shawnee, Oklahoma, fifty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. Number three, K&amp;M Wrecking, Oklahoma City, fifty-two thousand, three hundred. Number four, M&amp;M Wrecking Blanchard, forty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. And the final bid was from Southern Rock Equipment out of Davis at eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. The, this bid does include both the demolition of the structure and the environmental mitigation for the existing asbestos that's, that's there. And as the city attorney noted early on, we, I will come back to it at the next meeting with a request.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen, new business.
Madam Mayor, no, no new businesses here.
Item seventeen, administrative reports.
Madam Mayor, no administrative reports here.
Eighteen, commissioners' comments.
I've got one that I've been thinking about for quite a while. Seems to me that the city for years and years and years has, has had kind of a barbaric attitude towards our animals that we take into the shelter. I'd like to investigate this on a little bit, on a mission basis, to where we do something to get the public involved in trying to get a workforce out there where these pets are no longer put to sleep. I think if we put an effort on the city and, excuse me, and citizens. I think if we put an effort on the city and, excuse me, and citizens, that we could not have this idea of putting them to sleep. I'm not trying to criticize from past. I just think it's something that we ought to think about, what we're doing and how we treat these animals. There are, and I know that we could probably reduce some of the cost if we do some of this. But I just think it just paints a bad face on the city's shoulders. Lots of cities do it, I realize that. But I, I would like to make the recommendation that we look into this and get some focus groups going to where we could at least curtail this greatly or stop the competition. I just think it's something that we really ought to consider.
I did actually have one thing. I'd like to get a, a price, I guess, from our vendor on curbside recycling. Well, current price for this next fiscal year, to know what that might be and have that back to us the next meeting. And that's everybody, not an opt-in.
I've been approached just recently about that, when we think we could do something and probably...
Damn him, brother.
Yeah. That's Steve's thing.
Just so everyone knows, I'm gonna be leaving again. It's the summer, it's Army time, so I probably may be here the first meeting in July, but I won't be back until early to mid-August.
Do we have an agenda for the first meeting in July, or is it light?
We talked about that this morning, Madam Mayor. That meeting falls on Monday, the holiday week, which Wednesday would be a holiday for us, our employees, and Fourth of July holiday. We do have a couple of items that are actually gonna be on the agenda. We talked about moving it back a week. We talked about not having it. There's a couple of things we need to do. I don't think it'll be a difficult meeting in terms of what we anticipate will be coming forward. If for some reason we don't have a quorum, we just don't have a quorum. But I think we need to go ahead with it.
Okay. Okay. One other thing?
Do I also gonna be here? Because I may not be here today. I just thought I'd tell you all that.
Yeah, I won't be here on the second.
It's tied. Yeah. I'll take care of the business that you need.
As we get closer, Commissioners will just let us know whether or not they will or not be here. We'll know that occupationals will not be here.
Also, I received a phone call today and it's really kind of in conjunction with some other activities that happened at the end of the week. And it was about food for the hungry, specifically seniors. On Thursday, there was a joint effort with the state AARP group, the local group, and the Oklahoma Food Bank, providing fresh food to seniors at the towers. But it's only for those that live there. Those seniors that are still in need of some kind of food assistance, the local AARP group does collect food on a monthly basis. And they're taking names if, if there are seniors that need that. So I just thought I would pass that along because the local group didn't think that anybody knew about their efforts. So there, but just to summarize, there's a lot more emphasis and some assistance for seniors right now for, for food.
I'd like to make a comment. Do we have any bike lanes in our city? I know we've talked about it. Some kind of bike lane to ride bicycles on, on Beard or something, one that brought up at one time?
Commissioner, we have a master trails plan, which includes bike lanes and sidewalks and trails along railroad tracks and those types of things. That's been adopted by the city commission and the planning commission, for lack of a better word. But it's in our capital improvement plan to try and fund some of those activities. But I'm not aware that we currently have any designated bike lanes on our, on our city streets currently.
Could we try to work on that just as a sample and just paint, that you put out there, just lines?
Yes, you could say that, except for there are actual standards for how those bike lanes are supposed to be striped onto the streets and standards for how wide the lane widths are supposed to be. You know, for example, with the Kickapoo project, you know, if you've got a four twelve-foot lanes, you've got forty-eight feet of pavement, plus you've got a minimum of four feet of bike lanes on either side. When it comes to purchasing right away, it then gets more expensive to purchase right away on a, on a street like Kickapoo and, and have those lanes put in there. But in the future, I think we should be looking at that when we do street projects. Yes, sir.
But there are some streets that we need to evaluate to see if they can be striped for that in their current wide condition.
I think that'd be great. I think that'd be excellent. I've also got one other comment. The boys' high school golf team got second in the state. And I would like to bring up the fact that there is no driving range in the city that people can go practice golf at. Could we look into, seeing if the city could possibly look into having a municipal driving range hitting golf balls? We have girls' golf, we've got boys' golf, we've got OBU golf, we've got St. Gregory's golf. We've got more golfers than we actually know about. And there is a driving range. It's at Fire Lake and it's kind of far, it's kind of far to get out there and practice your golf over there. There's no lights available. Our town needs a driving range.
The county just bought one, didn't they?
Who did?
The county bought one.
Yeah, but they're not gonna use this driving range. But I'll talk to them about that, too. But could we look into the cost of that and see what could be done to, it's a, it's a great activity. It, it's exercise, believe it or not. It's a tough game. Could you please look into that and get back with me of how much it costs or how it could be paid for or?
Many years ago, we actually have a golf course planned for the Shawnee Twin Lakes area. That is part of our master plan for the lakes. I do not know if there was considered to be a driving range there or not, Commissioner, but we'll look into it.
I really doubt we could afford a golf course, but maybe a driving range could be talked about. We could get the coaches together that are at the high school, maybe the junior high. OBU coaches, St. Gregory's coaches, talk to them, get a meeting, see what their interests are. A community meeting to talk about potential driving range would be great.
He's making notes.
I hope so. I want to hear. I like that.
That's good. I'd like to ask John Crywicki to come up and see what the latest is on our wonderful Kickapoo project, where we stand with ODOT.
We've had several meetings with them. They presented us thirty-three additional easements to property owners. We had to acquire property from. We've gotten all of them but four. And by the end of this week, we'll know, we'll be turning our stuff over to ODOT and just throw our hands up that we won't be able to get. If we can't get them by then, we don't know what to do. Most of them are temporary construction easements. We may be able to convince them that it's not needed or just shorten up the driveways here and there or something like that. But we plan on taking our stuff to them on Friday.
Very good.
Thank you. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. A motion by Commissioner Sims and a second by Commissioner Winteringer to adjourn this meeting. Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. We will open up the meeting for the Shawnee Municipal Authority, June eighteenth, twenty-twelve. We have a quorum. Item number one, consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Harrod and a second by Commissioner Sims. Do we need to have the drought management plan on this?
We had to do it on the radio because we had to vote on it as a resolution.
Right. Does it need to be approved by the SMA?
We had, we had this discussion amongst ourselves and decided that since it was being adopted by ordinance, that, that took care of it. So, so we aren't doing it.
Okay.
We didn't put it on. I mean, we put it on here once.
Decided. Just want to make sure we have everything taken care of in this meeting. Call roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, and I'm gonna ruin this one, presentation by Smith Roberts Baldishwiler LLC regarding proposed scope of work for development of a multi-phase comprehensive utility system master plan. Yeah. And I didn't practice.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here.
My name is Carl Baldishwiler. I'm managing partner for Smith Roberts Baldishwiler. This is Max Baldishwiler, my older brother. He's one of our staff engineers and will be hopefully working on this project if we're fortunate to be awarded. We were asked to come, may need to answer questions, but to give a brief, very brief, presentation. We handed out some information. I think everybody got it. That was part of our interview packet. It was quite a bit more lengthy than that, but I wanted to keep it brief. This goes through our scope and project focus. I know you have our contract. You have our scope of services. In that contract is an attachment. This just kind of outlines a little more briefly that scope of services and how we will proceed with this project. Basically has four, four areas of concentration. It's water treatment, water distribution, wastewater treatment, and wastewater collection. And according to our scope of services and what we work with your city staff, it will do comprehensive planning, studying, gathering information from the city, using, utilizing city staff where we can in a contract that is, has a not-to-exceed amount. The, you know, should we get, you know, find information or use city staff in a way that we can save on the hours that we will put in and those amounts will not be reached. And trying to be brief, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. On the back page, you can kind of see what the deliverables, you know, deliverables will be. And the contract has sixteen months duration with a forty-five day after approval of the staff to write the report. We have monthly reports back to the city, which could include presentations to the commission if you so choose. And we will be reporting to city staff on a monthly basis with our progress. And each task will not be initiated until a task order is issued by the city.
I know it's on the second page. It's got safety yield at Twin Lakes and wastewater. Are you gonna make the assumptions that are in our present yield state? Or are you gonna take another look at it?
We're gonna take another look at it, look at future pumping, look at your hydraulic profile of your water plant, which was brought up earlier about capacity, pumping capacity through the plant to treat the water, which is a bottleneck at this time, as we understand it.
So you're saying it'd be possible to have monthly updates to the, to the staff and also to the commission?
Yes, that's in the contract.
Might email Jim today about having at least quarterly reports.
Yeah, we may not need monthly, but this is basically a hydrology study or a bulk of it is.
Well, I mean, there's analysis of the water treatment plant, the hydraulic profile and the, and the treatment process to look at the capacity of the plant, water distribution in your system to look at possible bottlenecks, you know, maybe line increases throughout the city. Do a water model of that and look at future demands and future pumping. Wastewater collection for infiltration and line size analysis, you know, be a hydraulic model of that as well. And then wastewater treatment, looking at your two plants and looking at reduction of INI, possible combination of the plants or some modifications to the treatment process.
Recommendation of how to handle the south?
Yes.
Plant in the future, basically.
Yes.
Whether we can upgrade it or we need to...
The options, present options and cost estimate.
Got it.
We do have a, a consultant that we work with on all of our projects out of Kansas City. It's Crowe Engineers. Tom Crowley will be working on this project. He got caught on a plane. He was gonna be here tonight. But we've numerous projects for Oklahoma City, Edmond, El Reno, working with them.
Only comment I have is that it's a lot of money, five hundred fifty thousand dollars for a study, so.
Well, again...
When they asked for a budget of six hundred thousand, I thought that we surely won't use that much money. But I, on the other hand, I've talked to engineers and they say it's for the work you're gonna get. It's probably not a bad deal, so I don't know. Still sounds like a lot of money to me.
It's a lot of money. We understand that. Again, it's a not-to-exceed contract, so it'll be as task orders are issued. And if, if we find them, this is a worst-case scenario, if we find information, or can utilize staff in a better way, then we'll, we'll reduce those costs.
How long does the study take?
It's sixteen months is in the contract is the duration. And that, again, it's by task order, you know, the, the frequency of the task orders that are issued and the funding available. But that was the duration that we talked about with city staff. And then forty-five days to write the final report.
Have we ever had a study like this? We haven't ever had this kind of study.
There's no doubt that it'll provide an honest amount of valuable information, pipe size and on the plant, all this kind of business.
Right, right. A tremendous amount of information.
Is a motion in order?
I'll, I'll take one.
Okay, I'd move you.
Oh, it's just a presentation.
Oh, sorry.
Move to item three. Yeah.
Three.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Approved, item number three, approved, approved contract with Smith Roberts Baldishwiler LLC for development of a multi-phase comprehensive utility system master plan.
So moved.
All right. A motion by Commissioner Sims?
I got a question.
What? Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Anybody?
So we're hoping for a second?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, a second by Commissioner Stevens. Okay. Question?
What's the difference between what we're, what's the study we're having done right now compared to what they're doing? I know we're spending all kinds of money on another study to tell us the sizes of the water lines in our community.
That's what this one, that...
This is it.
That's what this one is.
Oh, I thought that was already done. This is the, this is the real...
Let me, let me...
I thought those are...
Let me step in for a second and kind of provide a little bit of history for our citizens and for the Commissioners. We asked the Commissioners to go out for requests for qualifications. And we had several engineering firms that responded back to their requests for qualifications. Staff responded to those requests for qualifications, had those engineering firms come in. Smith Roberts Baldishwiler was selected out of several candidates. I think probably five, Jim? Now is the point at which we have selected the engineering firm that we think is best suited for our needs.
For what, where we are.
And, and we're at the contract portion of, of that to, to go forward with the engineering recommendation.
What was budgeted?
Six hundred. Six hundred.
Or more, it's...
Could be less.
You have something to add, Jim?
No, this is going good with me. Get it?
Thank you for answering my questions. I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments, concerns? Okay. Call roll then, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number four, consider bids. A, sale and removal of fishing wharf and walkways enclosed fishing dock on Shawnee Twin Lake, number one. Oh, James.
Yeah. Didn't have any takers this time either, so our plan now, since the, the budget is adopted, is to include that in the building of the new one for, for them to give us a bid to remove that and... for, for them to give us a bid to remove that and, and put a new one out there, so.
Fishing habitat, maybe in the middle.
Well, I've thought about it.
Okay. All right, we tried. Thank you. Item number five, new business.
Madam Mayor, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
All right.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Sims, seconded by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Winteringer. Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll open up the meeting for the Shawnee Airport Authority, June eighteenth, twenty-twelve. We have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of consent agenda.
So didn't hide and be need to be deferred to the next meeting?
Yep.
Yes. So, motion to approve one A.
And defer B to the next meeting.
And defer B. All right, wait a minute. You made the motion, Commissioner Sims and Vice Mayor Collier seconded. Approve A and defer B. To the next meeting. I'm sorry, date specific. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, new business.
Madam Mayor, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
Entertainer motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Sims, seconded by. Oh, Commissioner Smith. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Smith.
Excuse me, aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned.